We've got to be in Detroit because she's in heavier surgery. She's got to go on the air. But they said, Jasmine, they, this is not my 20 minutes ago. They said they had contacted you.
That's what I'm saying.
And you agree that she was going outside her room?
Yes.
Hey Samantha.
This is the heart. The same.
Yeah.
All right, I'll hang out out here. All right, I'll hang out out here.
Good afternoon. I'd like to call to order the council meeting of January 14th. If the clerk could please read the roll.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Councilmember Spatafor. Councilmember Washington.
Here.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yeah.
Councilmember Jackson.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Dunbar.
All right, we have a quorum. At this time, we have minutes for January 7th. Vice President Spatafor.
Madam President, I move the minutes of January 7th, 2019.
All right, I have a motion on the minutes. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, same sign. Passes unanimously. This is an opportunity for public comment. If you would like to make public comment, if you could come up to the podium, give us your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes. Is there anyone here that would like to come up and make public comment?
Kathy Miles, Woodbine Lansing. I'd just like to say that I support the sale of the Miller Road Center for the Capital Area Soccer League. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to make public comment at this time? Seeing no one, we will then move on to our agenda. The first item that we have on the agenda is we have the reappointment of two positions, one for the elected compensation board, which is Cassie Alley, and then we have Christine and somebody help me with the last name.
Zarkovich.
Zarkovich, okay. If I've.
Are your mics working?
Yeah. Okay, is that better? All right. Sorry about that. For Downtown Inc. And so Vice President Spatafor, do we have a motion?
Madam President, I move the resolution for the reappointment of Cassie Alley to the EOCC and Christine Zarkovich to Downtown Lansing Inc.
And again, these are reappointments, so they're not before us. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, same sign. Yes. Okay, I just saw Jason up there, and if Jason can hear us, we've had some people not able to hear us well, so we appreciate anything you can do. Okay, let me move this back there. All right, we're good. Thank you. The next item is amendment to rules of procedure for the Lansing Parks Board. These come before us, and what we do is either place them on file, or if we do not approve the changes that they've made, then we send back to the Parks Board. And the only change, Sherry, with that.
Was the meeting time.
Was the meeting time. That's the only change that they made to these rules. If there are no questions on this, then I would ask Vice President Spatafor for a motion to place on file.
Madam President, I move to place on file the amended rules and procedures for the Lansing Park Board.
All right, any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, same sign. Next, Mr. Young is here, and if he could come, and he can sit right there next to Samantha. Stephen Young is being asked to be an appoint, is an appointment to the elected compensation board. And in your packets is the resolution and his application. And what we normally do at this time, sir, is we allow you to give us a little bit of information about yourself and why you'd like to be appointed to this particular board. Mr. Young.
Well, thank you, members in the council. Again, my name's Steve Young, and I live at 2133 Moore's River Drive in Lansing, and been in that address since mid-November, or excuse me, mid, I'm sorry, 1994. And prior to that, I've lived in the Lansing area, actually, since the '70s, but in the city itself since mid-'90, mid-'94. Graduate of Michigan State University, have worked at various positions in Lansing, and currently am a principal in Governmental Consultant Services, Inc., a lobby firm just across the street here from Kozicek's. And I've, like I said, been in Lansing for a fair amount of time, and I'm at that point in my life, I think, where I can give back, and, you know, personally, and my professional life allows me to do that. In fact, the governor just appointed me to the Northern Michigan University Board of Trustees in December of last year, so I'm starting that process of giving back. And not necessarily being compensated, that's not what this is about, but I think I have been a resident of this town for a long time, and really feel it's important to do these things, and look forward to being on this commission if the commission so decides.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions from Mr. Young? I see none. This has been, you've been vetted through the mayor's office, meeting all of the charter requirements. On the back of his application is the resolution. Do we have a motion on the resolution? Patricia, Councilmember Spitzley.
We have a motion.
We have a motion on the resolution. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, posed, passes unanimously. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember.
And then this will be on next Monday night, and you can come down, or excuse me, two weeks, the 28th. You can come down and be sworn in at that time if you would like.
Okay.
Otherwise, you would go to the clerk's office on that Tuesday, and you could be sworn in at that time.
Okay.
Okay?
Well, thank you very much.
Terrific.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next resolution is the consideration of the sale property at Miller Road Center to.
Outside counsel.
Oh, I'm outside counsel, that's, I'm sorry. Headed myself. Outside counsel, and that would be the city attorney.
This is, there's a list that the council approves that authorizes us to use. Outside counsel. This particular request comes from the third-party administrator for our insurance policies and involves damage allegedly was caused to the galleries that you see there in the resolution. And so we have issues of what is known as subrogation and indemnification, and the carrier is asking for permission to hire that, and because it has to be the name of the city where the defendant, we have to have your approval to add them to the list. That's for that particular case only. And you may remember the damage that occurred under a street construction.
Are there questions for the city attorney? All right, seeing none, we need a motion to approve Councilmember Washington.
I would move that we approve Harvey Kraus for outside counsel.
All right, we have a motion. Are there any other questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, same sign. Okay, now, we're to the consideration of the sale of the property from Miller Road Center to the Capital Area Soccer League. And who's going to handle this for us? Do I, I thought I saw Brian McGrane out there. Is he not out there?
Yep.
Okay, Brian, are you handling this? No?
Lisa.
Okay, Lisa's going to handle it, all right. Good evening, Lisa.
Good evening. This is a purchase agreement between the Capital Area Soccer League to purchase the Miller Road Center. That document was placed on file with the clerk's office more than 30 days ago. There's also been a public hearing, so it is ready for a decision. We are waiting to schedule the closing until, until we know whether it's going to be approved by council.
Okay. And again, this is for $125,000, and this will be paid off in terms, correct?
That's correct. It's going to be a land contract with $25,000 due now, and then $10,000 per year for 10 years.
Okay. Are there any questions? I saw Councilmember Jackson first, and then Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to vote yes for it, but whatever happened to Peppermint Creek Theater? I know there was a lot of public comment and back and forth about the theater industry in Lansing and how this could affect it. Is there any update on that?
Ms. Harkin, can you answer that question?
I can. We met with Peppermint Creek, goodness, before the new year. Sorry, it's all blurred and together. It was a little crazy. And talked to them. I know that they have been talking to Dominic at SWAC about possible space there. The challenge is they need a space where they can keep sets up all the time, and we don't know if SWAC will work for that. So when I talked to Dominic last week, he said they were still sort of in negotiations. They are looking for a space. I don't know if SWAC will be the right space, but we have been meeting with them and talking to them about helping find a space.
Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Jackson.
Any consideration on that new proposed theater Lansing idea? Maybe accommodate them somehow that way?
Perhaps. It's, I don't think, really cooked enough yet to say what it's going to be or what, you know, I know there's lots of ideas about a performing arts center, but that could potentially in the future, I just don't know if we're close enough to any sort of even decision there yet to be certain for them to start for the next season, which is what they're hoping, two seasons.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. It's in the resolution, but I just wanted to mention for folks who are watching that any net proceeds from the sale of the property will be used for improvements in the city of Lansing Parks and Recreation System.
All right.
That's very important, and I know a number of us on the Parks Board here, so.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yeah, I think it should just be noted as well that this, of the three qualifying bids, I think gets us closest to the appraised value back in 2016, I think, of $155,000. I think we should always take consideration. Sorry, you can't hear me. And also, I think, you know, we need to recognize all that Castle has done for our community. We very much appreciate, obviously, their support over at Ferris Park with Beacon, the first Beacon Field. Obviously, they have moved mountains over in southwest Lansing for the entire Beacon Southwest project. Scott Dane has been a tremendous community partner, and so we are thrilled, I think, or at least I am thrilled, that they will be moving into the city of Lansing to continue their fantastic work. Thanks, Scott.
Any other questions? Councilmember Jackson, if I remember correctly, when they were down here before Peppermint Creek, there was a consideration made that they would be able to stay there through their season, and that the soccer league would work with them so that they could continue to work through this season. So it's not as if, once this is approved, that they would be out in the street. So at least we have that period of time to continue to work with them. Okay? Yes, Councilmember Spatafor.
Madam President, I would move the resolution for the consideration of the sale of property at the Miller Road Center.
I have a motion on the resolution. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, same sign. This will be up for a vote on the 28th. Thank you. Next is the debt elimination plan, and who is, is Angie handling that? Is she also handling the brownfield assessment?
Chris Klein is here handling the brownfield assessment.
Okay, Chris, what we'll have you do is move up while we're finding Angie. The reason this did not go to Ways and Means or Development and Planning was the time turnaround that we were asked to work on this. And so, in order to make sure that we meet that deadline, this is why we have it before Committee of a Whole.
All right, I appreciate that. The application, the deadline wasn't put out until mid-December about, so it was going to be a tight turnaround even for the proposal itself, so I do appreciate you expediting it.
Okay. You can go ahead and explain to us about the grant.
Absolutely, thank you so much. So this is a grant proposal, coalition assessment grant proposal for brownfields through the EPA. We've done this before in the past with the city of Lansing, city of East Lansing, Clinton, Ingham, and Eaton Counties as a coalition. We've been awarded in the past $500,000 in 2015 for assessment activities within the coalition. Creating a coalition is very important. It's a better way to get funded, a higher success rate, because you're showing the working together multiple municipalities, you show a greater need. So it's a great way to fund assessment activities, plus more dollars can be allocated that way as opposed if just one municipality was to apply on their own. And the reason that we're coming before you to ask for the city of Lansing to be the applicant for this funding round, because in the past, the brownfield authority has been the lead applicant, and that has worked, but they look at funding new entities. And although we're still connected through the coalition, and the brownfield authority will definitely be there to help manage a grant if awarded, there's just a higher chance, you're basically put into a different pile, so to speak, for consideration, kind of move up on the list.
Vice President Spatafor.
Thank you, Madam President. Quick question for you. I see a number of things, but it's not a lot of money. I mean, it is a lot of money, but it's not a huge amount of money with the listed project. What exactly would this grant go for? The resolution states a number of things it could go for, but what are, why are we applying for this?
So this is, it's basically first come, first served, but it's to help with any assessment at any existing brownfields.
Okay.
We have, the last funding round, we, I think it was 41 or 42 projects were funded through it.
Yeah.
So quite a considerable number. This could be basically any property that folks are looking to redevelopment, to redevelop. This is kind of a way to get them in the door, see if there are any assessment activities or any cleanup that needs.
So this pays for the assessment of the site to see if it's eligible for brownfield activity?
Correct. So it'll pay for like a phase one or a phase two environmental assessment, BEAs, do care and compliance plan, environmental cleanup plan, all of that.
Okay.
And plus, it does allow for some planning activities. So if there's a site that's been identified to plan for redevelopment, it could help fund those activities as well.
Go ahead.
The assessments are typically paid for out of the, where, if the grant doesn't exist?
They're typically not funded.
Okay.
Now, if it's a brownfield site, there could be brownfield eligible activities and be refunded that way.
Okay.
That's why I was saying, it's an important way just to see what type of sites that are out there and exist, what type of condition they're in. It's a great way to kind of introduce development to these different sites instead of them just lingering on and a way to kind of move that forward.
Thank you.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. It really is a great economic development tool. You know, a lot of times, it's that little bitty incentive that you bring in a company to help them in that initial phase one or phase two, and it's sort of, it is an additional tool in our economic development toolbox to attract companies into urban areas. And so it's a great opportunity, so I'm glad you're doing that.
I totally agree. And plus, those are available, even if it's not redeveloped that time, it's available on that site in perpetuity, so.
Are there any other questions? Chris, my question would be, we have no match money that would be required to be part of this, correct?
There is no match. We often require of the applicants, the actual folks that are applying for these funds, to put forth a certain amount of match. So we do have that. That's typically the business, their landowners putting forward those dollars.
Right. But it's not us.
There's no match requirement.
Yes. Okay, any other questions? Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. Can you explain just a little bit more detail about the different pile that we go into and kind of why, just real quick?
Like what potential funding mechanisms?
Well, you mentioned that, you know, if you have the, if we have the grant application approved, that we're in a different consideration. It sounds like a better consideration for the project. Can you just explain like how that's a little better?
Yeah, absolutely. So they're going to consider folks that haven't been awarded in the past, and it's all, like the federal ID number of the brownfield authority is different from the city of Lansing, is different from any of the coalition members. And it's just being who the lead applicant on it, because only one of the coalition members can be the applicant. So basically, having a different entity apply that hasn't received funding in, you know, X number of years, it's, they look to fund new entities, new projects, instead of funding the same ones over and over again. So it kind of ups the consideration there. We've had a strong application year after year, so this is just a way to kind of maybe get our application to the top of the pile.
Any other questions? Seeing none, need a motion. Councilmember Spitzley.
Madam President, I move the motion to apply for the brownfields grant.
We have a motion on the table. Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, passes unanimously. This will be before council for a vote on the 28th. So it makes your deadline. Thank you. I see Ms. Bennett is here, so we will move back to the deficit elimination plan. That's the mauve-colored one in your packet. Good evening, Angie.
Good evening. What you have before you is a deficit elimination plan for our special assessments fund. On February 4th, we'll be talking about the year-end results for fiscal year 18, which ended at June 30th. The special assessment fund is one of our various funds that we have. This is something that annually we have to pass a budget, a deficit elimination plan for. The reason being is this is the fund where we fund infrastructure improvements, sidewalks, roads, curb and gutter, that type of thing. Not so much roads, but curb and gutter for some road projects. And we have, instead of issuing bonds, which we could do for cash flow upfront, we have opted to use a city's cash flow, which is a better deal for those that would be paying the special assessments. Otherwise, we'd be incurring extra costs that the special assessment payers would have to repay. So we chose to do this because it makes it more cost-effective, but it does mean that every year we have to file a deficit elimination plan with the state. It has to do with accounting rules and the way that this type of fund is set up. In other words, we basically, we have, we have these outstanding amounts out there, but we won't be collecting those until future, until future years, and that's the reason for the deficit. So what we do is we propose to the state the attached resolution as well as those schedules, and those schedules show that with the existing special assessments, you know, how far out they will go and when those will ultimately be paid off.
And these are plans that are worked out with the property owners as to making payment plans on these?
Correct, correct. They are, they come before, they have a public hearing that is, takes place before the special assessment is rendered. There are several different hearings that take place. Then there are, throughout the time, that there are estimates, then the final amounts are determined. There's time for appeal for those special assessments. And you can see on here, on one of the schedules, it notes the vast majority of our sidewalk repairs and storm sewer-related curb and gutter.
Okay. Vice President Spatafor.
I have a question. So we did a special assessment on, is it the Glenburn Commons? That was cleanup?
That was cleanup.
Yeah, this is not in that?
No, that's a different one.
That's a different, okay, thank you.
Are there other questions? Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. Just from my knowledge, I see they have different roles, and so I'm assuming that those are different households.
I'm sorry, different roles.
On this list here, page one of two, it says Role A367. Is that, is that just a list or a specific household, or what is, what is that designation?
No, those are projects. So with any project, there are several parcels or households that are included in those. Yep.
Okay.
And they go back quite a ways. Some of them are probably, we probably had a 20 years, so probably about 15 years back or so, I would say, for some of these.
Okay.
The more expensive cost projects, the longer we stretch that out for people, the shorter the project, the shorter the payback time.
Appreciate, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we need a motion on this. Vice President Spatafor.
Move the resolution approving the deficit elimination plan for the assessment, special assessment capital project fund.
Okay. Are there any other questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, same sign. That will also be on the 28th.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we're done with that, we're done with the bonds, and now for the big one. If we could have all those that are going to talk to us about the Townsend parking ramp, please come up and take seats at the table. And before we get started, what I'd like to do is have the city attorney go through the steps. Do you have that? Okay. The steps that we have to go through. You should have that in front of you with the seal, okay. And if you have any questions as he's explaining this, because it is a little bit convoluted, please.
Correct.
Raise your hands.
I'll try to make this as.
Well, wait till he says something. Go ahead.
You want me to go now?
Yep, yep.
I'll try to make this as straightforward and simple as possible, but it actually has its roots back in 1996, when the stadium was being built. There was a tax increment plan, and the state was about to shut the window on being able to capture the school education tax for projects. And it was due to shut it on December 31st, I think it was 1996, 1997. So there was a plan put together so there would be no general tax dollars being used for the construction of Cooley Law School Stadium right now. So this started the process with the parking system property being owned by the Lansing Building Authority. Lansing Building Authority. Built the courthouse, Veterans Courthouse with it. And as I said, the stadium originally was used for the Lansing Center. And so the Lansing Building Authority owned the Townsend ramp and owned parkings. And there were bonds that were issued, Lansing Building Authority bonds.
And can you explain who's on the building authority?
Building authority, this building authority is the Public Service Director, the Treasurer, and the City Attorney. So it's a three-member board. That's the way it's been since it was created, I think back in the 70s or 80s. The, so there were bonds outstanding, and then there was a series of complicated lease backs and leases between the city where the revenues flow to pay the bonds, and then the tax increment revenues are used also. So after that happened, somewhere in the 2000s earlier, there were changes made to the structure and the refunding of bonds. So instead of the Lansing Building Authority leased to the city, it was a lease between the city and the Tax Increment Finance Authority. And there was a tax increment plan. And there were, and the funds through this system of leases and operating agreements flowed to run the parking system. And to the extent there are not tax increment dollars coming in to be used for those bonds, these are general obligation bonds. So in this lease that's between the city and the Tax Increment Finance Authority, it states that if there are any properties that are removed from the tax plan, they have to be replaced by properties that are of equal or greater value. If that does not happen, then it jeopardizes the ability of the Tax Increment Finance Authority to collect these revenues from the state. Now, these are state education taxes or state dollars. The school districts always get made whole through the formulas. So that's what is being proposed. The Tax Increment Authority actually approved the substitution. And there are two ramps that the Public Service Director and the Finance Director will indicate are being substituted. There needs to be, so after they're substituted and the property is sold, and that's the main transaction here to the state, the money will be used to, and be placed in an escrow. There'll be an amendment to the lease. The money will be used to cover the bonds. I think it's about 13 million or so. The Finance Director will talk about it. To defees the bonds. And by defeating, it means that you just can't pay it off like a mortgage. They're not callable. So the money has to go in escrow, has to be invested in treasuries, and then the payments will be made until the call date, I believe, which is somewhere in 2023 or whatever. And the Finance Director can talk to that.
We'll get to that, Angie.
So, so that's the transaction. Now, the Lansing Building Authority is still the owner of the, was still the owner of the Townsend ramp because of the old structure. We have, there are no further bonds that encumber the property, or Lansing Building Authority has no other bonds outstanding. We have Bond Counsel's opinion to that effect. We have Bond Counsel's opinion to the effect that the property can be deeded to the City of Lansing. And as a matter of fact, the City of Lansing is on the purchase agreement with the Senate for this sale. So last Thursday, the Building Authority met, and the Building Authority authorized, after receiving the report from Bond Counsel, authorized a deed, quit claiming the deed to the City of Lansing, which would then enable the City of Lansing to honor the purchase agreement with the state. So that's where that is right now. That would have happened anyway at some point because there are no further bonds outstanding. So the other part of this transaction is because we're selling property, you need the Act 33 review, so it's going through the Planning Board. And we'll come back to you on hopefully January 28th, which is the date of the public hearing that's being set by this resolution. So again, to sort of summarize it, you've got the Lansing Building Authority owned the property, now is giving it to the city. You have the Tax Increment Finance Authority that has met and agreed to substitute two ramps for the Townsend ramp, therefore leaving it free to be sold to the Senate. And then you have the Planning Board hopefully approving this transaction. And that report would come to you by January the 28th. Once, again, once this is all done, hopefully on February 11th, and you approve the sale, there will have to be an execution of this amendment to the Tax Increment Plan within three days, because the closing is set for February 15th. I think, did I complicate everybody or you? Okay. That's in essence the transaction. And I don't want to say it's like you get a mortgage on a house and then you substitute something else as security, because there's no mortgage on this right now. But that's similar to it. You're just substituting property in the plan with other property. And then the property, the Townsend ramp, will be free and clear to sell to the Senate. Now, it is an exhibit to the purchase agreement. You may recall, there has been some discussions over the year about the parking payments that maybe we were due from the Senate. So that entered into many discussions with the Senate as to what that figure is. There were differences of opinion based on legislation that was passed back whatever year, the Townsend, 1994 or '95, whatever it is. So we've reached an agreement, and as part of the parking agreement, the Senate will pay us $1 million. And even if this doesn't close under that agreement, it's going to be paid. Now, I know somebody's raised an issue that, you know, there's two documents. There is offer of purchase agreement, and there's the, I mean, I'm sorry, the buy-sell agreement, and then there's the parking agreement. And somebody raised an issue about one of the documents does not say that the rate that the city will pay for parking spaces is per month or whatever. It's clearly in the other document that we have not signed yet that says it's a per-month rent. I would rather not have it a per-month rent, because that'd be 198 a year, 125 a year, but it's there. So that, in essence, I think I've covered the entire transaction, and others can jump in.
Just to clarify a couple of things. Part of the agreement is to allow 228, am I correct? Parking spaces that are still utilized by our city workers. That's the money that we'll be paying on a yearly basis to the Senate to be able, well, to the state to be able to continue to park there. So that's that portion that he was speaking to. In this list of transactions that you see that we have to go through, our goal is to have them all on February 11th. The reason is, instead of piecemealing this, we'll just take them in the order that they have to be approved by, such as accepting the deed, moving, you know, Act 33, all of those things. So we're going to have ample time to talk about these issues, and if there are outstanding questions that we have to be able to answer those. Now, before I turn it over to the rest of the administration, are there any other questions for City Attorney Smirka? No, Peter? All right, so now we'll turn it over. I'm not sure who wants to start on this, but we'll go ahead.
I think that Jim pretty clearly talked about the transactions. And I think if anybody, I was going to talk a little bit about the background, which I'm happy to do, but we can also just go to questions if that's easier.
Go, go ahead.
Well, Jim sort of alluded to this, but the Townsend ramp, the city had an agreement with the State Department of Technology Management and Budget. And through that agreement, the Senate leased spaces, and they were capped in statute at $40 a space. So people kept saying, you know, a lot of people ask us, why? Why did the Senate come to us and want us to buy this ramp? And I think really the Senate got, was the middleman, and got sort of entangled in this argument with DTMB. The Senate is a separate legal entity. Our lease was with the Senate. Senate was paying DTMB, and the Senate felt like they wanted to just control their parking. So that's really how we got here. They approached us about purchasing the ramp. After we ran all the numbers, ran the appraisal, it really looked like that seemed like actually a pretty reasonable and not irresponsible thing to do. And so we wanted to move forward with that transaction, but we wanted to make sure that the city employees that we have parking there now, it was important for us that they were able to continue parking there as well as some public parking, because we know that we have some public parkers who park there on a daily basis or on a transient basis as well. So we have preserved all of that in the parking agreement that we're signing. And so that's sort of the background. But as they approached us, we thought that it seemed like a good idea, given where we were on the ramp and given that the appraisal was more than our bonds.
We do have a question from Vice President Spatafor, but before he asks his question, when the Capital View, which was what the Boji Building was, is called, was built originally, Mr. Boji was going to build the ramp himself. And then through a number of discussions, ended up asking us to build the ramp. That's when we brought the state in at that time to guarantee that they would utilize enough spaces to make this profitable for us along with the amount of spaces that the Boji or Capital View would be using at that time. There was going to be a call center that was going in there, and that ended up falling through. There was also a restaurant that was in there for a short period of time. But that's how we ended up with the ramp. And Vice President Spatafor.
So it's kind of a trivial question, but how detailed is the agreement for the employee parking spaces? I know that the Senate has been looking at getting at the lower ground, so I don't know if you move the public parking up to the top, doesn't make a lot of sense.
Did we include that in the agreement?
Who would like to answer that question? Mr. McGreen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councilman, yes, there was a little bit of detail in there. We are moving these city parkers up. We did freeze the rate currently at the $110, which I think is one of the more attractive rates on the ramp. And the 228 is sort of a not to exceed, which we anticipate we can negotiate on a year-to-year basis. So at some future point, should we choose to move employees out of there and send them back to, say, North Capital, we would have that option in the future.
Thanks.
Okay. Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. So that brings up a question. What's the benefit of keeping city employees in a ramp that we're not going to own versus finding accommodations for them in a ramp that we do own?
Mr. McGreen.
Thank you, Madam President. Right now, again, things are sort of in flux. I would tell you, our system is, we have waiting lists for a number of our ramps. We were engaging in our Extreme Parking Makeover project at this point, too, so we've had to shuffle people around. And in fact, if you recall, I think only about a year ago, we only had maybe 50 spaces used in the Townsend ramp for city employees. We had to move about 150 some over there when we engaged in the North Capital project. So we know that folks are able to be moved around. We hope not to do that. We don't like to do that, but we do have those options. So we do see a future where we may be moving some of our employees eventually back into North Capital in a couple of years when those spaces open again. At the same time, we may have other options with North Capital with some of the development projects that are going in to sell some of those spaces. So we're trying to pay attention to what inventory is going to be most profitable and useful on both sides.
Go ahead.
It's more economical, is what you're saying, to have them in, to pay for them to be parking in that ramp at this point than to have them in our city-owned ramps?
Correct. At this point, we just don't have the capacity for them in the North Capital ramp.
Thank you, appreciate it.
City Attorney Smirka.
I might also add to that, that the current draft of the parking agreement has flexibility to allow the city to do what Mr. McGreen indicated. There are periods of time when those spaces can be reduced or whatever that's needed.
And part of the negotiation with our unions is the fact that we will provide parking for them. So that's part of a subsidy that's in our budget each year. Councilmember, or councilmember, I'm sorry, Mr. McGreen.
Thank you. We would add to, correct. We are essentially parking, or the parking fund is being reimbursed to some degree by employees, regardless of where they park. So actually, I think we may see a few employees who actually see a savings with our new rate negotiated at Townsend, whereas 110 will now be the top rate. I think some may be paying slightly higher. So they'll see their share actually drop.
Okay, so that takes us into the agreement, and who'd like to address that?
The parkers, the parking agreement or the?
The development agreement that's on file.
I think that it's relatively straightforward, given how complicated the transaction is. The, we will be selling the ramp for $18 million, which is almost exactly what it appraised for. It was 17 million, 800,000, something like that. So really close to the appraised value. There's a deposit price of $1 million, and so that will be returned to the Senate if we do not close. Closing, as Jim said, is to be honored before February 15th. And obviously, that has to be approved by the council. There is the separate parking fees that will be paid to the city, regardless of whether or not we close on Townsend. So we will be paid the parking fees owed to us by the Senate. According to, and we already covered the parking agreement specific to the employees, according to the State Budget Office, the money will be appropriated January 31st, although I don't know how that works if council hasn't approved it yet, so I'll have to follow back up with them. But we are, you know, the legislature has agreed to it. Governor Snyder signed the supplemental appropriations bill. So we are, at this point, you know, that part of the transaction is ready to go. It's just waiting for council approval.
If, Angie, if you could go over the financing and a couple of the questions if you could please talk to us about. So it's my understanding that the only, well, let me ask it this way. Are the only bonds that we have out on the parking system the ones that are about the 13 million that we would be paying off? Or are there outstanding bonds that are also on North Capital and North Grand?
There are, the bonds that are related to the Townsend ramp are two bond issuances, and that's when we say approximately $13 million, that's the amount. There, in addition to that, there are bonds outstanding on other ramps, but they are not commingled with these. So that's something we had to research to make sure during some of the refundings and refinancings that occurred over the years, that those were not commingled. So with this, we will still have some outstanding debt on the other ramps, but not on, but this will satisfy, as City Attorney Smirka mentioned, the proceeds that will be, there will be an amount determined to put into escrow. When that amount is put into escrow, that will pay down to the bonds as they come due and/or are callable. What callable means is that we can, there are call provisions in some of the bonds that say we can basically bring those in early and have those mature before the maturity dates. So the escrow will then pay down those bonds until the very last one is paid off. This legal diffusance that he mentioned means that, once we put it into escrow, it's really determined to not be debt of the city anymore. So it comes off of our balance sheet. It's no longer on our balance sheet in terms of the debt, as well as we no longer have to pay those debt service payments, because the escrow will pay for those debt service payments.
And the remainder of the money, if we're selling it for 13 million, we have 5 million, does that have to go into the parking system?
That amount is to be determined, how that will be spent.
And who makes that determination?
That would ultimately be the mayor.
Pardon?
That would ultimately be the mayor to recommend the use of those proceeds.
All right. Vice President Spatafor.
That was my first question. So my second one is, what is this, what is the general fund savings? So what are we paying right now on the parking fund on those bond payments, on a yearly, monthly, whatever figure you might have basis? What are we not, what are we gaining out of this sale?
Well, I do want to make it clear, there is no general fund contribution. But in terms of the parking fund, the combined debt service between the two bonds is about 1.2 million a year.
So that's 1.2 million that the parking fund will see on an annual basis that we're no longer paying on bond payments?
That we will no longer be paying those, correct.
And is there any savings involved? You know, I was disappointed to hear that we can't prepay the bonds off. I didn't know that. But is there any savings involved? You mentioned calling it in early. By having that money sitting there, are we going to save long-term dollars? Could that 13 million? I was disappointed to hear that we can't prepay the bonds off, I didn't know that, but is there any savings involved? You mentioned calling it in early. By having that money sitting there, are we going to save long-term dollars? Could that 13 million end up being, you know, we only have to pay 10 of it because, is there any savings involved by paying it off sooner?
There isn't savings in paying it off early, however, because you're setting up an escrow right now, and there will be interest earnings on those proceeds, it will be a reduced amount, so to speak, because it does take into account the interest earnings on those proceeds until those bonds are paid off.
Well, 1.1 million annually is not nothing. Thanks.
Okay, are there other questions? Mr. Brewer, did you have any other questions?
No, I do not. I think it was adequately covered.
In looking at this, how many staff do we have that are dedicated or part of their day might be dedicated to Townsend? Mr. Kilpatrick, or do you know, or, I'm sorry, it gets moved around again. All right, Mr. McGreen.
Thank you, Madam President. We actually had a meeting earlier today with the Senate to talk about a lot of the logistical transfer, and I would say at this point, we actually have two staffers who are dedicated to all four ramps. And again, these are folks who are doing a variety of things like servicing machines, cleaning the ramp. So, we did actually briefly entertain a conversation today about, in fact, actually contracting services of one of those people who will have some hours freeing up now that they won't be spending time on that routine maintenance. Nothing was confirmed or agreed to. In fact, I'm not sure that they'd be interested. But again, I would say that there are two folks who are servicing all four ramps at this time, which I would say would free up a portion then of one staff person's time, but I think we would have other things to be able to assign that person to in terms of maintenance on other lots in the other ramps. So, the actual staff specifically dedicated to that ramp is minimal.
What capital improvements, if any, have been made or new equipment in the last year at that location?
For Townsend specifically, I'd have to go back and look, I'm not prepared for that, but I would tell you, as we were entering into these conversations, certainly that freed up our thinking about future capital improvements. So, I'd have to go back and get that list of things that had happened in the past year or two or three to that ramp. I don't have that with me at this time.
Okay, that'd be fine. Are there any other questions? I thought this was going to go a little more lengthy. No questions? Okay, what we have next then? Get my agenda here. Excuse me. What we have next is we need to set a public hearing, no, we have the resolution for the acceptance of the deed, and again, these will all be done on the 11th. I already know that we have two council members that are going to be gone. All but one item on this list is a five-vote item. One item, which is the sale of property, is a six vote. So, I think we've had everyone except Councilmember Dunbar let us know that they're going to be there. So, you're going to be able to be here on the 11th, Councilmember Dunbar. Okay, so we'll have enough to move forward if that's what council decides. So, the first thing that we need to do is have approved the acceptance of the deed from the building authority. Vice President Spatafor?
Madam President, I move the resolution accepting the deed to the Townsend parking ramp from the Lansing Building Authority.
All right. All those, any questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye, pose same sign. The next is setting the public hearing for the Act 33, which is the real estate sale in agreement for the Townsend parking ramp. Now, this will be on tonight for, is it setting it for the 28th?
Yep, setting it for two weeks from now.
Okay, for the 28th. Yes, Vice President.
Did you need a motion?
Yes, I do.
I've moved the resolution set the public hearing for the Act 33 real estate sale/purchase agreement for the Townsend parking ramp for January 28th at 7:00 PM.
Okay, you have a motion. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose same sign. Okay, I don't see anything else on our agenda. With that, we are adjourned until 7:00 o'clock. Thank you.